Good evening, I will now call the order this September twelve, twenty twenty four, City of South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees Meeting. Secretary Sean Faye, please call the roll.
Hey, Kenny Gross.
Here.
Edward Pearson.
Here.
Vincent Meeker.
Here.
Bianca Richards.
Here.
Thank you.
Public comment, in an effort to better manage the business on the agenda, general public comment will be limited to thirty minutes at the beginning of the agenda. If there are speakers in the queue, they will be heard, many in the queue, they will be heard at the end of the meeting. If you would like to make general public comment for items not listed on the agenda and are under the purview of the Library Board of Trustees, please now raise your hand on Zoom, which we don't have, or turn on it in a speaker card. We'll get Sean with the speakers a few seconds to raise their hand. Are there any speakers?
There are not.
Okay. There being no one present to speak for the queue, I will now declare the public comment period over. Reordering of additions or deletions to the agenda, does anyone have any reordering of or additions or deletions to the agenda?
Nope.
Next item. Approval of the minutes of the July eleven, twenty twenty four Library Board of Trustees Meeting. It is recommended that board review and consider approval of the July eleven, twenty twenty four meeting minutes.
I have one edit that I'd like you guys to adopt it with that amendment. Under item three, under Commission Action and Motion, we have the motion carried by Committee Leader One, it should, because there's eyes, nose, abscess, it's saying it should be four, zero, one, zero. So we're just missing. We're just, we're just correcting that.
With that change, I move that we approve the minutes in the July, July eleven meeting.
I second.
Okay. Do we need to roll?
Yes, shall I call roll?
Oh, affirmation, okay.
Kenny Gross.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Vincent Meeker.
Yeah.
Ed Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you.
And it's a library community center site planning project progress report. Is there anything to report?
Uh, yeah, I can just kind of report out quickly, Kathy might have more, but we've met, see, two times now, and it's, it seems like an interesting group of people. We haven't had a hundred percent attendance yet, but we're getting there. But it, but it's, it's a wide variety of people, so the conversations and the comments have been very interesting, so. I feel confident in going in the right direction, reporting back to you as the trustees. We are pretty well on target, we had to review the proposals. There were, there were thirteen submissions that were eligible and the first round narrowed it to six and then maybe review six. Yes, and then we narrowed it down to three and we will start interviews on the twenty fourth. And, you know, to see these three. And, and other, that's it for my comments, do you have anything Kathy?
Well, yeah, or what questions do you guys have, I mean, I mean, so there's fourteen people on the committee. It is a really interesting group, there are people who are in public works in other municipalities or governmental entities and, you know, architects and public relations and just lots of different people who bring a lot of, you know, a lot of experience, a lot of good experience. So, yeah, it's been interesting and, and interestingly, the, the ranking, the, the six that we got down to three, it was pretty clear, the top three, you know, like I thought, well, fourteen people, you know, who's, how, but it was like, oh, okay, that's the top, I mean, you know, it was really quite obvious. So that was nice too, to see there's some consensus, because everyone obviously looked at them totally independently and submitted their feedback, so.
The submissions, are they architecture or are they kind of some overall?
They're all, the, almost all of the firms were architectural firms, a couple of them, one submitted with a kind of a consulting firm in partnership with an architectural firm and some of the firms submitted with, as a, with a subcontractor that's a consultant that does like library consulting outreach kind of stuff, so, but they're all architectural firms. And they all, the way that they request for qualifications was written. And also just, the request for qualifications went out on like December twenty second, so it was a weird time and I sent it to all the library architecture firms that I knew, so we got a lot of response from library architecture firms. So, part of the, I think that these firms that we've ended up with are the ones that did a pretty good job of remembering the senior center and the community services piece, so there are people who have experience, they're not just library architectural firms, they have a lot of experience with, you know, city hall, community centers, lots of other kinds of, kind of civic.
And they're looking at this entire.
Yes, and then they had, and then a couple of them, you know, have some like cultural and historical background, and so they talked about that. A lot of them were into sustainability, so that's good, I know, but yeah, they, they, yeah, and in one firm, it was very interesting, they admitted the, the, the challenges with this limited space, but with those challenges, you know, they, they suggested some, some opportunities, so that was.
When you say this limited space, you mean the footprint of this structure, are we going to be limited to the footprint of this structure?
Not the footprint, but we have the community, this, we can't tear that down and, and who knows about this tree, I mean, I, I mean, I don't want to put it on the record, but I mean, right, are you going to keep a tree or plan for the next fifty years of public services, you know, but to try to do something with that tree would be very difficult, but yeah, I, it's the, the existing footprint, no, but within the park, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
How often you guys meet?
Once a month, so we meet the third, the first Thursday of the month, the first, yeah, I get the, the friends, this, and now the board, yeah.
I have a process question, so if you narrowed it down to three, based on like RFSQ, are you doing an RFP now with the three?
No, we are.
There's cost estimates and there are RFSQs?
Um, the, some of the firms have a cost estimator as like a subcontractor, and I think, so what we're, what we're going to have to do, because the way the RFQ was written is I think we're going to have to refine the scope of work a little bit when we negotiate the agreement. So, versus just signing a contract, we're going to have to go back a little bit to the drawing board and make sure that if we want a cost estimate that that's included, or if we want whatever. So, yeah, we're not doing an RFP for this phase.
But we'll know, at least as to the three, the cost projections, that it picks me somebody who may end up being the most costly or.
Well, no, they, they submitted, yeah, they, they all came in, yeah, we got pricing.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, I think what Annie is, Annie, what Min is talking about is costing what might this whole project cost? And so different firms, they, they have that type of service as a subcontractor. Because part of, I think, what we want to get out of this phase is, A, some kind of idea that we can share with people who we're trying to raise money from, and then how much money we have to raise. So they'll, they'll have a cost estimator that'll, you know, will get, you know, I probably do it, that's what they do for a living, but.
And the community members that, what is very nice is everybody seems to be consistent and on point about, we've got to have a plan and we've got to, we've got to, you know, be consistent with what is the plan before we go out and do anything more, so at least there's no, uh, yeah, we all seem to be on the same, you know, thinking, and some of the community members have brought up some very, we've got a couple of engineers, so they're bringing up some really good pieces that, like, when you're not an engineer, wouldn't know, so.
Yeah, one of the things they talked about was, and I remember when I went up to Hayward for that Library Journal Design Institute, if you guys remember when I did that, one of the things at that time, I had asked them of the architects that were there, like, what is this site? Like, people kept saying, we're doing a site plan, I'm like, wow, what is that, you know? And they said, well, they come in and they, like, literally look at the, the site and the restrictions, whether it's geotechnical or water or, you know, easements and all of that kind of stuff, but that hasn't been part of this conversation at all, and so one of the engineers, is he an engineer or an architect?
Or both?
Both, maybe both, and they were talking about like slopes, you know, and. Really can unless you know, like, I can't build my building on a sinkhole or, you know, but at the same time, you're not going to go into great depth at this phase, but he pointed out, you've got to do a little bit of that.
Yeah.
Otherwise, these kind of in parallel, otherwise these designy needs of definite people, you know, they kind of need to know, are there some major restrictions, like a tree that wants to let you take down or whatever? So it's been really interesting, it's been really interesting, helpful, so. So timeline wise, the interviews are the twenty fourth. That's our last step unless something comes up and we need to do something else, so we should be making a reflection after that. And then, as I mentioned, you know, working on the scope of work in order to get the contract in place, and then we will have to go to the city council to do the award of contract, and I think we tentatively have that on like the second meeting in October, but I'm a little nervous that I'm going to be able to make that, that I'm going to be able to get it done by then, so if it's not the second meeting in October, it'll be the first meeting in November. But we're going to try for that second meeting.
Administrative policies review, community party report, that's me and Min, so give you a little update, and last time we talked about Min's going through the, we divided up the cities, the libraries, and Min's got this spreadsheet, which is wonderful, and I've been reviewing, I have the summaries that Catherine Group prepared, and then I downloaded all the different cities' policies and procedures and interesting how they vary so much as far as just, not only content, but brevity. And anyway, so I'm reviewing those and taking notes, I should finish this weekend or during the week, I'll plug them in to Min's spreadsheet, at least, my mouse is in the spreadsheet, it's going to work out, same categories. And then Min and I are going to get together and assimilate everything and edit each other's, and then my question was, and then we can present that to the board at the next meeting, my, my question is, ultimately, do you want a redraft based on that?
First is like a red line version of what we have, I mean, I sort of think it's a re, a redo.
Okay, okay.
I mean, yeah, that's my, what I pictured is, you know, if there's anything good in the current one, you know, we could pull it, but I really feel like the current one, in terms of the way it's written, the way it's organized, we will have better language, so I, I almost feel like it's a start fresh.
And one thing, and maybe I'll address it with you after Min and I meet, but one thing that seems to come up in reviewing these is, is how they vary on enforcement and the power they give to some people, which is almost law enforcement power, and in others, it's, it's, it seems to be chaotic, anyone being forced, so we'll talk about.
I would love it if maybe after you guys meet, could you meet with staff?
Yeah.
So just so you know what we've done, which is very little, just because time and the ad hoc committee has been a challenge to, to do that along with everything else, but um, after the last meeting, Bart, Nate and I did meet and go over all of the comments and content that Min had, you know, that we went over here, and that was really great, that was really helpful, I think it was a good discussion, but then of course weeks go by and it's all, you know, starting over from scratch, but we did make, I think we made a column in the spreadsheet where we were planning to go in and put in some thoughts, and we haven't had time to do that, I'll tell you a little bit why we've been so busy, but um, but yeah, that sounds great, and yeah, you guys meet, and then if we could all meet, I think that'd be great.
And then I had a question about, I think we talked about this when we met with your team last time, but I don't think we've actually seen it, it's like, if you guys could share, if you could say like a log or something of incidents, because I think that helps us with the enforcement and then like specific areas that we can focus on where they're taking like more clarity.
Yeah, and we can, one of the items tonight is the safety, security stuff, so we can talk a little bit more about that, but yes, we can definitely share that, I didn't remember that I was supposed to, but yeah, it's just a precedence and I felt that shade and I can just, yeah.
And the next thing I need to do is, is the security, safety, security upgrade.
Sorry, we, did you say we're ready to?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I didn't prepare any written report, I wanted to just bring you guys up to date. As you know, we've really been kind of trying to focus on this over the last couple of months, we've been working on the code of conduct, thinking about the, the municipal code, we closed the library, you guys gave us permission to close the library for a few hours and we had an all-staff meeting, which isn't quite all-staff, because we have a lot of part-time staff who have other jobs and they can't be here, but it was a pretty good turnout. Maybe twenty out of thirty or something, it was pretty good, and we had a really good discussion, it wasn't super formal, we, we kind of talked about what we're trying to do with the code of conduct, we talked a lot about how people are feeling, like, I think it was a good opportunity for people to share their concerns, share their experiences from other libraries that they work in. You know, people had some interesting ideas, especially I think the part-time staff, because they're part-time, they're often, they're just not as engaged in the operational stuff, so they, you know, maybe they don't know what to do when X happens or, or whatever, so we had some good conversations and some good input from those part-time staff. One of the things we talked about was security guard, and if we have a security guard, what do you, what would you like to see? So the good news is, and this council hasn't formally approved this, but the plan is to take the funding that the city has for the kind of concierge security person that's at city hall, if you've been to city hall, there's a person sitting there in the hallway that says, hello, sign in, and, you know, they're going to do away with that in that format, they, if they want to do that, they'll staff it with an intern, whatever, I don't know what, so that funding, the intent is to have, bring that funding to the library so we can get a security guard, so today, I think I was with these guys for like an hour and a half, the firm that we're going to use is the same firm that provides that person at the, over here, but um, I met with the, the president of the company and the deputy police chief was here and Shannon, Shannon Rabelato, who's our lieutenant, Shannon Rabelato, and then a couple of guards were, were there with the owner of the company, so we walked the whole library, we walked the perimeter, we talked about, you know, what do we need, what do we want, you know, staff. Being a library, right, we're very, a little bit more tuned to kind of the inclusivity and the equity and what are we, what message are we conveying if we have, you know, someone, you know, checked out, like a police officer? So, those are some of the things we talked about today, but I think that the good news is that I think the firm really gets the type of person that we need, right, like, we need someone who can build relationships, you know, i- it understands our rules, can, is articulate, can communicate, deescalate, which obviously they have all that kind of training. But they, and we kind of wanted someone like not looking like a police officer, but the company says, you know what, that's, that's our staff, we have to put them in that gear that we think they need to have to be safe, or for those eventualities that, you know, I mean, I don't wear a bulletproof vest, and I'm here every day, so, but that's, but that's how he feels. So that's a little different, and I think staff and the public, we're just going to have to be prepared to explain, you know, why do you have a security guard that, you know, has a, wears a bulletproof vest and.
But you want them readily identifiable security, just from a deterrence standpoint?
Absolutely, we just want them to look like paramilitary, you know, I mean, yeah, so I think.
The woman at the front desk, the, the city hall designer.
No, no, she's a totally different type of security, right, like, so, if he, they come out and assess, what is the job you're asking us to do, and then that's his call that, oh, then my guards need this, this and this over there. They don't need that, they need a, you know, a greeter, basically, so we need a greeter and, you know, we had some really good conversations, I mean, he really, this, this owner of this company, I was really impressed, he really gets what it needs to do that in, in a library site, they used to do security for Azusa Public Library, and they have a lot of similar problems, the gold line ends there and, you know, they have a lot of the same challenges that we do. They do security for the Salvation Army facility in Pasadena, so just a lot of experience with some of the same kind of clientele that we have. Some of our clientele, I said the difference of that, between maybe that and us, that we're mixing a lot, a bigger variety of people together, you know, I don't think the Salvation Army has as many little kids and family, you know, it's just a little different. But they seem to really get what, what we need from them, and I am going to ask them to change the color of their shirt and put their vest under their shirt instead of on the outside. So we'll see if we can get them to, to do that, and they don't, they don't carry, no guns, no taser, no, no pepper spray, they do have some kind of, some kind of a, like a little projectile that would sparkle someone or, I don't know what it is, but, so they don't have, but they, you know, they have like a nightstick or whatever that's called, so they, you know, they look kind of, they have the belt to have all the stuff on.
So I'm assuming they're going to, some of their beat will be walking the perimeter, and then my, only as a former neighbor, my recommendation would be that you need to let the neighborhood know, yeah, because the neighborhood is going to, they're, they're, you will, you, you don't want them to panic thinking, yeah, the worst, right, but you want to get a buy-in from the neighborhood.
Yes, I, I mean, this is what I think too, I think that, I think that a lot of people who use the library and the neighbors will be like, great, we're thrilled, but I think others will be like, oh my God, is it so dangerous that we need a, you know, like this per, you know, and so I think we just need to be ready to do some, you know, pre, putting some information out preliminarily, and then we might do like a meet and greet, that would be great, yeah, so we'll have a little meet and greet, the neighbors can come, people can come. I asked them, and I don't know if it'll be female guard, male guard, like, I don't know who the guard is that they'll select for us or that they'll, you know, assigned to this job. But I said, do we call you like Mister, whatever, I said, no, we, we go by first name, so you know, we'll be able to, these people will get to know the community and they'll be like, hey, Tim, so yeah, they're going to walk outside and they'll walk inside, but not in a way that's like, I'm hovering, you know, it's not that big, we walk every half an hour. So they'll probably do something similar. And they have a lot of tools at their disposal, so we're going to, we're going to be getting the incident tracking tool that you guys approved the funding for, that's on the council agenda next week. They have their own tracking system, so we talked about that a little bit, like, well, we're going to want, you know, if you're using your thing and putting your data in, we need that in ours too, so what's the best way to make that happen? But I was really pleased, I think they're going to be a really good.
Well, then there's going to need to know the rules so that they can, they can be, you know, right, consistent, right?
And, and we talked about the rules, and we're in the middle of trying to make them better. And we talked about like the enforcement piece as well, like, who has municipal code, who doesn't, what's the point of municipal code, like, they, they suggested, or it's, we talked about the idea that instead of using the municipal code, they would go back to using a trespass, which is, you know, criminal code, but they would sign it, because the problem with trespass is that the library staff don't want to do a citizen's arrest and they don't want to sign off on a trespass, because it's not, I'm not my building, like, I don't live here, so people are a little reluctant to do that, so he's like, no, we would, that would be us, so that's, yeah, there's a lot of things to think about in terms of how, what's the best way to enforce or have there be consequences, and I think, again, I think the difference is having someone who specifically is signed to do that job is a very different feel for people in, in two ways, both in terms of deterring maybe some things, people come in and go, oh, you know what, I'm just going to not, I'm going to go somewhere else, I'm done, you know, but I also think it's, it might actually cause more conflict with certain types of customers, right, like, the, the kind of, I'm thinking, I can think of some customers who would take a very, you know, a more aggressive, right, than they would with me. Like, I could have a whole conversation with that person, but no matter how good the guard is, you know, no matter how good they are at communicating, if it's, you know, a person that they're fooled and it, it's just different, like, you're getting a little bit of a trade-off, but yeah, they have to know the rules, they have to understand the rules, they have to understand how we, you know, what, how do we enforce things, what do we do, they will have, they'll have a radio that goes straight to police, which is great, because one of the things that we always struggle with is dispatch and trying to communicate with dispatch and, you know, make them understand why we need someone and they speak the same language, you know, so when, if they get to the point where they need the police, they'll radio and say the right things and get them over here quickly.
Well, I just think the, the PR piece is going to be, you know, I think that friends can help out with the PR and just, you know, maybe get the, the city newspapers, because I, I just think, yeah, you, you want to start up positively and not, yeah.
Yeah, and you're absolutely right, and that's what I said to them, when, when I was like, is this what you're going to wear? And then, and I was like, okay, well, we're going to have to.
Ever had, we've never had it.
I don't, they did have a security guard here years ago, and the problem was that they were not, that they were too, they didn't have the skills, they didn't have the people skills and the, the, the ability to assess and make decisions, I mean, they just didn't, they weren't, they didn't have those skills, so they stopped, they stopped having them. But yeah, I think you're absolutely right, and that's, I, I said to the deputy chief, I thought, I need like an FAQ, and we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to do a lot of stuff, and, and even with the staff, you know, I'm going to have the company, you know, the owner of the company will come and talk to staff. And again, I think we've talked about this, but, you know, when I came here seven years ago, we talked about security guards, and at that time we were like, no, it sends the wrong message, you know, we don't want people to come in and think, oh my gosh, it must be very dangerous here because there's a security guard, and we've all, as a staff, kind of had a three sixty or one eighty on that, you know, that, you know what? We need a security guard. But we do have, you know, we do have concerns about inclusivity and people who maybe don't feel welcome here because of a certain presence, I mean, you know, we, we have an awareness of that, that maybe some other departments don't think about as much, but I think that the firm is, is really good and they're very smart and they're very sensitive.
Is it a contract, so let's say if they don't work out, can the city then?
Yeah, it's a contract, okay. It's a contract and they're also doing, I think, yeah, they're, it's a contract, they've mostly been doing the person at the front, but they're doing some other work for other parts of the city, and they actually, when we were looking at security cameras, that firm did a, you know, we met with them here and did a walkthrough, so he's been, he knows the library.
How soon might this actually begin?
The intent is, I believe, to have an item on the city council agenda the first meeting in October, apparently the current contract is expiring, so we need to go back and extend the contract, but the city manager had already told me, oh, I want to do it on the first meeting in October to, to, you know, hey, council, we're, this is happening now, so it'll just be combined, it's actually better, so I was like, well, what exactly am I taking to council, it's not, the money's already appropriated, it's more like an FYI, we're doing this, but this, it'll make a lot more sense, it'll be like, we need to extend the contract, we need to appropriate this much more money, because by then we'll have bids and know, you know, how many hours a week, what new board. So, yeah, second, second, first meeting in October, and then I don't know how long it'll take to kind of get the details.
And, and John, as our council rep, John Primmitt, he's going to be up to date on that, right?
I think that the city manager has already spoken one-on-one with them, I mean, one of the first things, I think I told you, when I, when he came, he was like, why are we, why are we spending all this money for this at city hall when there are other needs in the city? So I think he already was talking one-on-one to council members and, and staff over there to say, hey, how do you guys really feel about this, do we really need this here? What do you think? So I think that conversation. Um, what do you think? So I think that conversation has already happened on a one-on-one um with all of those folks. So.
Is there any um like co-responsibilities with the senior center and that larger park around? Or is it security just for the building and the outdoor areas? What is that? I'm just, you know. Pitching it to the community? Is it someone that's patrolling the park?
Yeah, they're gonna walk around the park. I mean, I don't know if they're gonna go like out to the outer sidewalk, but they're gonna, you know, walk around the building, see what's happening on the balconies. You know, see if there's thirty kids smoking under the, you know, on the back driveway, you know, they're gonna kind of. Be looking around and yes, they'll, they'll stop by the senior center. I mean, we went to the senior center today and talked to Melissa who runs the senior center. And she said they really haven't been having problems lately. They haven't had a problem in quite a while. Um, but yeah, they would pop in there, make sure everything's okay, say hi to the seniors, you know, again, it's sort of getting to know. Getting to know people. And the idea is that we would be assigned, I mean, it depends on the schedule. There probably is not, it probably won't be like a single person just because of the schedule broken seven days a week, et cetera. Um, so there might be like a couple of people that are just our people, like it's not somebody different all the time. So. So yeah, I think that it, I think you're right that the communication piece is gonna be really important. Because I think a lot of patrons will come in and go, thank goodness, it's about time. And I think other patrons will go, oh, that seems, I mean, I have staff who are gonna. Have thoughts about, about it. So we just have to, we just have to work it out. I mean, again, I, I came away from this meeting feeling like, okay, this is fine. You know, this is, yes, would I rather they not necessarily look a little. So um, so uh, policey, but some things apparently the state requires. They have to wear certain patches and so they kind of, they will kind of, anyway. I think that they um, they totally understand what it is that we're looking for, which that's the main thing. Yeah. So, um, what else was I gonna say? Um, the.
When just makes this, because the next is library operations.
Oh, yeah. Sure, we can go into that. Um. So. Let's see. What do I have on here? Oh, so the budget, the budget was adopted in August and we didn't meet in August, so that's news for you guys. The same budget we presented in May, June and, and, and everything like that. So it just took a long time, but it got done. Um, the main things that might look different if you're actually looking at like the, the numbers page and what was our budget last year, what's our budget now? Is that about eighty thousand dollars of um contract services uh was moved to management services budget. And so those things are gonna be paid out of management services, but that makes our um overall budget maybe look like our. Maintenance and operations budget probably looks like a big reduction. Most things are just pretty flat, you know? We have the same amount of books, we have the same amount for this and that. The other big difference is that last year we had all the money for the teen room. Um, and we had money for the book drop, which then in mid-year, they said, no, you can't have it after all. Um, but so uh, that's not, we don't have any of that in this year's budget, so that's like fifty thousand dollars or something less this year. So that might be noticeable if you're looking at the numbers. Um, in terms of all of our repairs and our building stuff that we need to do. That budget was adopted as well in August and um, the key to that has been, or the. The challenge has been the money is there, but there's no one to do, do it. So the very exciting news that I'm thrilled, that's gonna be on the council agenda, I think next week. Is the hiring of a basically three full-time project management kind of people for the public works department. Um, and one of those people will be literally ours for library projects. So, and I think. The contracts, it, it's at least a year's worth of full-time project management. So. The idea is that we are gonna get through all the security improvements. We're gonna get the cameras, we're gonna get the whatever to block out the balconies. We're gonna get the key cards, um, all of that stuff's gonna happen. We're gonna get uh the ADA ramp.
Yeah, the question that it said seventy-five thousand or seventy-three thousand for lighting for the ADA ramps?
Um, yes, I think that um, if I'm not mistaken. I have to look. There, I have to like look at how these break down in detail. It's a little bit confusing. Some of these things are numbers coming from the Marks and Akubo facility assessment we did in twenty twenty-three. And so like, what is the exact component of that seventy-three? I have to look at it because lighting is not gonna cost seventy-three thousand dollars. Um, but we also need to put like maybe a rain liner, we need to do stuff. Or it might also include, we have to go below grade to do the waterproofing. So it might be. It's gonna cost seventy-three thousand dollars to reinstall the ramp, you know, so there's some other things going on there. And bottom line is, if we don't need that much money, then we just don't, you know, we allocate it to something else or it goes back into the pot. For other uses.
What's radio frequency identification?
So RFID is um a technology that we libraries have been using for a long time. Um, it's uh, you tag all of your items in the collection with a tag that um actually communicates. With a radio, so it actually stores information. It stores the name of the book, who has it checked out. It, it. Got like a little chip in there versus right now, we have a barcode and that's how we identify something. So what radio frequency allows you to do is a checking materials out, like right now, we have to open every book. Put it under the barcode reader. So with RFID, it's communicating on a radio frequency. So you put a stack of like ten books on a little pad and it just checks them all out, all at once. Um, so it's a good like customer self-service feature because they, right now, I mean, we have the self-check machine, but it's the same. It's like. Don't you, like, you have to just do each one, one at once. So there'll be new, um, there'll be new self-check stations. Where people can just go over and get their stuff, um, new security gates, because again, instead of. Right now, we have magnetic strips in books and other materials and that's what.
So are, are you guys gonna have to then physically put the chips in each one of these?
Yes, we will.
Yeah.
Gonna get volunteers.
Whoa.
Yeah, so right now, this is, yeah, so each, each.
Every item.
You just have to, you start at the beginning and you go through.
Are they just like stuck on there or?
Yeah, they're like, they're just, yeah, they're little stickers. You just stick them in. Um, they're a little more expensive, like so right now when we, when we process the book. We get, it's a barcode, obviously, but it also gets this magnetic stripy thing. So the RFID tags are a little bit more expensive.
If they load them with information?
Uh, yes. So part of the process of um, when you are fixing them. Is you're doing that as you go through the stacks. And I don't know quite, I mean, they basically. You can hire the companies to do it for you, but most people opt to do it themselves. But they give you like a little cart with everything you need and you just go through the stacks. With your little cart.
Would it sync with the barcode that's on there already and then get the information that way?
That's a good question, probably, actually. That probably is, because the other, yeah, it's not like you're manually entering that. Yeah, I'm, you know, it's done. That must be what happens. And some of the other benefits, again, I mean, seriously, like purple tunnel. I mean, you know, like it, it's, it's really good for staff. Um, if you think that, you know, we check out two hundred thousand items a year, that's literally two hundred thousand times. People are picking up a book and pushing it around and um, you'll sometimes see the staff down there wearing their little rusty things. Um, so it definitely has kind of ergonomic things and just the um efficiency. It saves a lot of time.
Progress.
Saves a lot of time. Um, and then it also, in terms of kind of ongoing selection management, you know, right now. We have people who go out into the stacks and they do shelf reading, which is checking to see if everything's in order. Like manually checking and this, you can take a little wand and walk along and it'll go beep. That's out of order. Beep, that's out of order. So um, it's just a whole different technology with this. It's communicating information in a way that we don't have now. So that's been long, uh, long time coming. I actually thought that like we're the last library on earth, but I did a little inquiry of kind of some libraries. A lot of the local libraries, San Gabriel, Alacant libraries, and not everyone has done it, which I was pretty surprised, actually. I thought honestly. This is a technology that's been in use for fifteen, twenty years. And I thought for sure, we're the last library in the world, but we're not. So it'll be exciting and staff, especially staff who've come from other libraries that had it. So like our support services librarian Jenny, um, she's just, that she's the one who's writing the RFP. I mean, she's like so excited to get it here. And she's like, you have no idea how great it's gonna be. You can't even imagine until you get it. So. Um, and that we have to, uh, that is um COVID, federal COVID money. And it has to be encumbered by the end of the calendar year and spent by the end of twenty twenty-six, I think. Um, so we better get that RFP out shortly and get that contract to the city council to approve an award. So that's what that is. And that's again, that's been on the list for a couple of years. Um, it's been a challenge to have the staff to kind of even. The only because we now have Jenny in that position, are we able to tackle that project? Um, yeah, so facility improvements, that includes a bunch of ADA stuff. And the waterproofing of the roof, obviously, we're not replacing the whole roof at that price point, but we're gonna try to address. The, the biggest issues that we have with the roof in certain areas, which I think is, a lot of it is um. This tile roof and the fig tree is the problem. Um, most of the flat roof. Like the, you know, kind of the sealed flat roof is not, is not leaking, but there are some special places that. That are leaking. So they'll do some, some work on the roof. Um, we're also gonna have them, have this project manager help with the teen room. Because they, public works just haven't been able to help us with that and we haven't been able to do it ourselves. So we're gonna have them help us with that piece. And then something else we were just talking about today that I was like, well, they can do that too. I don't remember who it is, but um, basically we're gonna have this person that are. Who's just gonna be in charge of this stuff and get it done, which is amazing. What else? Uh, and the, just so you know, the furniture for the teen room arrived and it's in storage. It's like I'm not putting it in there until we do the carpet and whatever, you know, spoil, spoil the effect to put it in the ugly room now. Um, although we did put in, because we need them, we put in the tape, the tables and like the high counters are there, but like the, the stools aren't there. The kids just sit on the floor under the table. Like, we put it in there because we don't have enough room to store them elsewhere and it doesn't give away the whole. What it's gonna be like when the other furniture gets put in. Um, so staffing stuff, um, as you know, in February, they said. You, we can't hire anyone until we figure out what's happening with the budget. Um, so we've just been, you know. Leading people and not able to fill it. And um. For us, because we just need the bodies here for hours, it's been really challenging. We've had a really rough couple of months. More than a couple of months now. Um, so we've had five out of ten, eight vacancies and one of those. Uh, filled positions has been on a medical leave since like April. So I mean, really like eighteen hours a week times five. That's a lot of hours. Um, so we filled one, Jose, who I just saw. Um, and two are in the onboarding process, hopefully soon. They apparently just got their fingerprints back and all of that. Um, and that list, that applicant pool was actually from a recruitment that we started in, in like December twenty twenty-three. So we pulled all the people from that list that we can, so we had to repost. So we now have a new batch of applicants that Daryl. Has gone through and will be doing, uh, gonna be interviewing for that. And Jose, like I said, is our new person, uh, has his career in UCLA. Um, he's like a great guy. Uh, the clerks, uh, we, we had Suzanne Soto, who I don't know, Bianca, do you know Suzanne? Suzanne has worked here for like year, twenty years, some huge, long amount of years as a part-time, a part-timer. She has a full, real important full-time job, but she just has worked here with us weekends, nights. Um, but she finally said, all right, I'm done. So that vacated um, a clerk two. And we have a clerk one vacant. So we, we are, we just literally posted today the clerk one. But probably what will, so we'll get that list going and an interview and probably what will happen is we'll fill the clerk two position and that'll probably vacate another clerk one. So then we'll be able to pull from that list and fill both of those. So again, just getting these people back on the books and working. It's gonna be huge. Same with substitute librarians. We really need uh. That pool used to be however many people you need, right? So sometimes it was seventeen people, sometimes it was less, but sort of. Over the last couple of years with changes in finance and, you know, just different ways of doing things. The idea now is that we have twelve people. Um, and there's talk of going back to the idea that just, we don't care how many people you have. How, however many people it takes, but you can't spend more than X amount of money. Um, but right now we have twelve. So we have three vacancies that we need to fill. Um, and we have some of the people that are on that, that are in amongst that twelve, really cannot give us hours very often. So we may let some people go so that we can fill those positions with people who can give us more hours. Um, so that position closed made us been reviewing those applications. So we'll hopefully be doing those interviews early October. Um, and getting those folks on board. And then, uh, I didn't put it on here, but uh, one of our part-time children's librarians. Which are kind of, we think of them differently than what we call our substitute librarians. They have, you know, they have to work eighteen hours a week. Versus some of the subs work once a month or four hours every Saturday or whatever. Um, and they have responsibilities equivalent to what a full-time librarian does, just less time. Um, one of those people just gave their notice and she hadn't been here that long, but she got a full-time job somewhere else. That's always a hard position for us to keep filled because everybody who's good wants a full-time job for the most part. Every once in a while you get lucky, like we had Cindy Fender for seven years and she was fantastic, but she didn't want a full-time job. But it's hard to find that. So that's another one that actually we're hoping that we can use the same list uh to fill that position, even though it's a little bit different position. So trying to get back up to speed with staffing. Um, and then we had service awards, Michael. Who's now our admin clerk upstairs, who you might know, five years. Olivia's been here five years now, which seems like it. Sometimes it seems like, like longer with Olivia. Um, Andrew, ten years. Kay is one of our substitute librarians. She's been here for fifteen years and Bill, thirty years. So that's fun to see. Um. Computers, we, the computers that we have here have, have had, are so old and barely work. And I think because of um, you know, again, turnover in these departments, you know. I need computers and then whoever's in charge of that leaves and, you know, it's just, it, it hasn't been very easy to. Um, get certain big things like that done. But the new management services director is fantastic and he understands that. Oh, my God, you guys need new computers. So you probably remember that in February, we got fifteen new computers for the public. Workstations and some of the computer, um, OPAC, the catalog workstations. So now we got uh. Staff, uh, computers for staff. So everybody is getting those. Um, they've been rolling them out a little slowly. So I said that. Not gonna work. We need to do this more quickly. So we're gonna have them all by the end of next week. So people are very excited. It's like a big morale booster. Which is crazy, but I mean, that's the reality is we have these really twenty minutes. Booting up in the morning, not two years. Yeah. Um, a summer reading program, just a little wrap up. You know, it was a good year anecdotally. I think people, you know, it's a good summer, good summer reading. Uh, the teens were great, the volunteers were great. Um, uh, quantitatively, we were down a bit in terms of participation. Um, and I think uh, may have described here some of those reasons. Um, our outreach wasn't as robust as it normally would have been.
What's the story about posters in the classrooms?
I don't know why. I don't know if they said no or I don't know. It's always a thing with the school district, you know, like what can you do? What can you not do? What will they let you do? Who do you get? How do you contact people? I think, but I think as, as much as anything, my guess is that it's. As much about the timing and the content, you, you know. So, so what happened, if you remember, is that we lost our full-time children's librarian in like May and um, so. We're not May, no, May, but the last year. Anyway, the, the new children's librarian started in December and by the end of December. And by December, we should already have ordered all the stuff, designed the logo, da-da-da, all these things. And we hadn't, because there was no one to do it. So we just got a really late start. to do it. So we just got a really late start. Um, so that shouldn't happen next year. So I think we'll, we'll be able to get back on track. You know, we didn't do our outreach to the private preschools and, um, yeah, I think that made a difference. And we were, Kevin probably remembers, we're very late on the friends, you know, solicitations for donations, like we just, everything was, was late.
And it was kind of my, my first year working with that too. So I just, I, I just remember being kind of frustrating how much work it was as everyone was working so hard to get everyone on boarded and
Yeah. We were just, it was just late.
I thought it'd be great launch and increased middle school sixty-seven percent. Like that's something middle schoolers are reading. That's like, that's the big note there.
Yeah. And, and I don't know, like
All increases were the younger ages.
There were two random increases, the middle school and the pre-readers. Everybody else was a decrease. No, kindergarten was an increase, pre-readers, kindergarten and middle school, but there were decreases in all the other age, age groups. So.
Can I share like one observation, which maybe would be annoying for the staff because it says you guys just did the big change returning to paper tracking? But I will share, my kids are eight and ten. We signed up for the summer reading program. They read all summer and I would say like three weeks in traveling, they lost their paper tracker. And so, and they also read on their Kindles. Still like we borrow from the library all the time, but we don't physically come to the library a lot. So like they never turned any of their reading hours in despite like doing all the reading. And we have a lot of friends like that, like they borrow on their Kindle, they, um, lost their paper tracker. So just a suggestion of maybe next summer, like keep the paper tracker, but even for middle school kids, some of the older elementary, like having like a Google form where they can just submit their hours weekly from home might be helpful because they are doing it. It's just we like couldn't find the form and then we never came to the library to turn it in.
That's an interesting idea of letting them. Like for the people who want the paper tracker, because you know, when my kids were younger, they loved stuff like that. But I feel like at this age, like we were traveling over the summer, like they lost it at some point. Yeah, I mean, it, it may be just a matter of the, the technology and the tools, you know, we, we had an app specifically for this purpose and it was very what's his name, Art, and some people loved it and some people couldn't handle it and the teenager stuff like couldn't handle it like
I think the Google forms is really easy because you just submit it. Cause I looked at the paper tracker and it's just like, how many hours and how many books did you read?
And let them do it. That, that's the difference is letting them do it themselves, but in a format that is, um, again, the app had a lot of it was a little rocky. Um, but again, some people miss the app. So, um, okay, that's something definitely think about. Um, and I didn't know the kids were not getting their prizes because they lost their forms. Like kids will come in and say, I lost my form. We give them a new one, but if they're not coming in and, you know, then we're not gonna know. So that's, that's a good point is maybe there's some other technology that we can use other than the app, um, to give another opportunity for tracking. All right. I'll bring that up to them. Thank you for that feedback. They did. I think that, um, the other thing we may or may not have done this year, the, the state library used to prepare a survey, like a, for all the libraries could use the survey to do a survey of their participants. And I think the state library stopped that this year. So we normally would have put out a, the survey to get some of the information. We would have gotten that kind of comment back. And I think that didn't happen this year because the state library didn't provide it. So we'll have to figure out, you know, again, this year was not the year we barely got the, you know, the basics together. So we'll have to, um, we'll have to figure that out next year. But I mean, I, you know, again, I think my observation was that it was great. Everybody loved it. Kids were happy.
The one that, that kickoff event was great. I was like, we need to do more of this. It was, it was, it was so packed and like, I don't know. It was really cool. I've never, you know, I haven't been here and seen like that many people except like Fourth of July, you know?
We need to do, we need to do so shave eyes every time.
Every time.
I mean, really.
Brought everyone out.
That's, yeah. Um, let's see, what else about, uh, library operations? We are just talking about RFID. Oh, here's the other big thing that's been happening the last few weeks. Um, I think you maybe, I've maybe said that the city has been doing a classification study, meaning that they're looking at all of the jobs in all of the, you know, the whole city to see. Uh, so it started with every employee completed a survey about what do I do? How much time do I spend on this? What, you know, so then the, the consultant takes all that in, looks at the job descriptions, look at job descriptions from other places that are supposed to be the same and, and come back and say, here's what we recommend for your job descriptions and trying to also equity, you know? Um, we might have somebody doing something just as complicated as another department. They call it a management analyst. We call it a something and ours is getting paid like this and that's getting paid like that. So it's looking at both um, duties, job descriptions, but then there is the compensation piece as well, which is a little bit separate, like that'll come after. So we, a couple of weeks ago, we received these, um, proposed job descriptions. And, um, some of our job descriptions, especially on the support services side, so the support services manager, which is a new job description from twenty seventeen, when we did the operation study. Um, and then the people below that, those jobs haven't changed. Like, you know, the job descriptions are like thirty years old. I mean, the job is typist clerk. And that tells you, it literally like, so they basically were working, you know, in terms of creating a new job description for us, they were working with really bad job descriptions to begin with. And had I known that this was like, oh, here's your opportunity to change your whole departmental organization chart. Um, it would have been nice to know and have more time to do that, because that's essentially what ended up happening. You know, we got this list of job descriptions and we couldn't even figure out like, wait, well, is this supposed to be that was work? And now it's, you know, and so Barb and Nate and I have been non-stop between all the behavior management and danning people for the last two weeks, trying to get that together. So it's exciting because it's really great opportunity to, to really see like what do people do? How do they compare to others? How do they compare to each other? Um, on the part-time side, because the minimum wage has gone up, the compaction is ridicul- I mean, you know, like the, the clerk makes like ten cents more than, like, it's crazy. So all of that, it's an opportunity to fix all of that. Um, one of the things that I proposed like two years ago, because in our part-time, we have aide one, aide two, clerk one, clerk two, for like the twenty people. And it takes so much, I mean, the amount of time it takes to go through the recruitment. Um, is crazy. So at that time I, and, and because of the compaction, I said, let's get rid of aide two and clerk one. So we just have aides, you know, we just have the two levels. And now because we got rid of the, the two in the middle, there's at least a little bit of a you know, five percent or whatever that should be, five, ten, whatever it should be. Um, and again, turnover in HR, like that wasn't acted on. And it's also, um, we have a, not a union, but a employee association for the part-timers. We have a, a full-time and a part-time, and the part-time doesn't always have a board or people that are active. So it can be a little hard for the city to like negotiate with them. But in any case, that now we can fix that now. Um, so a lot of good benefits are gonna come out of it. And I think, um, it's exciting. It's just, it was a lot to, you know, say, okay, in fact, they, they gave us like a week and I was like, we can't, we can't do it in a week. So, uh, we've had an extra week. Um, so they may not be perfect, but they're gonna be much better, um, much better for recruitment, you know, I think right now. And a lot of libraries are like this, you know, you have a, a job description that's just librarian. Our librarian, I mean, what Jenny does is very, very, very different than what Olivia and Alexis do, or even what Bree does. So if, when you go to recruit, people are like, what are you, what is the job? You know, it's sort of confusing. So we'll have an opportunity now to sort of spell out that, um, librarians may be, you know, focusing in these areas, support services, adult, y- you know what I mean? So that it'll be a little bit easier when you're recruiting. Um, the other challenge for us in recruiting is that because we're so small, we don't have like librarian one, librarian two. So whenever we recruit, we get like the greenest people because, you know, it looks like an entry level job. Um, the, the pay scale, although I haven't looked lately, but, um, like I would say, our librarian is in terms of the pay scale is similar to other libraries, like one and two. So in fact, at the end of our librarian scale, it's the equivalent, you're getting paid the equivalent maybe of a librarian two somewhere else, but it's not showing in your title. So you know, when we recruit, we get, we often get green people. And I don't think we're gonna be able to correct that, but at least we'll, it'll be a little more clear what we're, what we're, uh, recruiting for. So it's actually exciting. Uh, and then the, 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 um, the cost piece of it, you know, like, well, what are the changes? You know, what are the changes in? What does it mean if we adopt these new job descriptions? Um, you know.
So the classification we're talking about, like there, when you mentioned it's across the city, because this is how the county does it too, with our classification and compensation. Like a clerk in your department would be the same as a clerk in Parkton Rec or Red Park.
Yeah. I mean, I think, yes, sort of. I think that both, um, in community services and in library, we do not, many of the positions just don't match city departments, right? So yeah, like in the city, every department has a management analyst. They do whatever they do in that department, but they're all management analysts. Uh, and we, right now, all the part-time positions are only hours. Nobody else has those. Um, nobody else has librarians. Um, what else does nobody have? Well, I mean, a whole bunch of things, right? And, um, and, and one of the things that we need is more help at the admin, like I need help. So, um, other departments all have deputy directors or whatever. Um, but they're talking about, um, thinking more about like management analyst role. So this isn't again, not to say that, um, I'm gonna get a management house, but this is an opportunity to say, this is what I, what we want, you know, this is what our department should look like. Um, so yeah, but it, it's a little bit, uh, we do have like unique positions, but yeah, I think then what happens is we have people doing I mean, will you see it now? Right? Like you, if you see our clerk and you know, there's the, it's not fair. They, they're not getting paid what their compatriot management assistants or management associates or whatever are getting paid. So yeah, we're hoping to fix some of that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think like, I feel like working for, I used to work for the state and now for the county. And I think when they do a good job with classification and compensation, it's like really helpful for recruitment because you say like, you can come in as a clerk at the library, but your career trajectory takes you all over like the city. But if you have like really specific job descriptions only through your department, it's hard to see like where the growth is.
Right.
Um, so that's definitely important.
Yeah. I mean, and it, it is interesting because, yeah, again, all the other departments, that all works. Yeah. Like, I mean, we just had the, one of the management analysts in HR just moved to public works. They can go anywhere, right? And, and here, um, you know, if we have a clerk position, that, that there's no exact equivalents and community services is the same. They have like community services supervisor, like they have, but we are trying to clean that up too. So they, they, they have something called community services supervisor. And we have Daryl, who's a library technical assistant, whatever that means. And again, that's one of these job descriptions from thirty years ago. So he should be library supervisor, you know, like there's, we're trying to find those equivalencies and looking at, you know, we're looking at that community service supervisor job description because Daryl and that person should be similar.
Same. And it's interesting with human nature, a title really does hold up. You, you, you just feel more confident with your title. It's, it, it is powerful.
Yeah. Who wants to be a typist clerk? You know, nobody does. You don't wanna put that on your resume. So yeah, we looked at a lot of other libraries to see what are their, what are they calling these positions? Um, because one of the problems that happened last year is they, they did negotiate a new, uh, new agreement with the part-time, uh, employees association. Um, but they made some assumptions about our positions without asking us. So they didn't understand for us that aide clerk, that's a series, you know? To us, that's like, that's like assistant one, assistant two, whatever. And they didn't know that. So like right now in the books, our aide two is making more than our clerk one. So luckily we don't have any aides because obviously we couldn't pay the aides more, you know? Um, so I think that, uh, it, it's a good opportunity to get some of this stuff fixed up. Yeah. That's, I think that's all I have for operations. Did you guys have any budget, any questions about the budget? Um, I guess I could tell you that where's my, so they don't break it down in, uh, wow, I guess on the next page. So our part-time budget, um, is good. Uh, we had three hundred and sixty thousand last year and now I have like four hundred and twenty. Um, that number we get by doing a big spreadsheet of our own. Um, because it's again, the way that most departments do it, and not that many people have that many part-time employees, but you know, they say you have four part-time employees, they work eighteen hours a week, you need this much money. I'm like, yeah, I have part-time employees that work once every six months. I mean, you know, really like we're never, so you can't get our budget by multiplying the number of positions by the number of hours. So they can't come up with this number. We have to come up with this number. Um, so this is the number we came up with. It takes into account when they, um, adopted that new agreement with the part-time employees association. Our librarian's got like a twenty-seven percent raise, which is, you know, gonna make a big hit on our part-time budget. So that's, that's probably mainly why this is such a big increase plus just regular costs of living increases. But that's good to get that amount. And I, again, I think they're starting to think again about this idea that for both community services and library. They don't, they don't need to know how many people it takes. They just need to just tell me, don't spend. You know, if I need fifteen aides, as long as you don't ever spend, you're fine. So we'll see if that kind of comes to fruition. Um, and then, um, uh, so wage benefits are up. I think that the biggest change operations and maintenance, even it's that seventy thousand dollars, but, um, it's also just very flat. We did not get, um, increases. And I think this is also showing that the, like we're going from three hundred and forty-one thousand adopted last year to two sixty-three. So that's even more than the deep out when we moved. So kind of disappointing. I mean, the, the CPI for the year was, you know, whatever, three, three percent, you know? It'd be nice if our budget was going up with the cost of buying things. Um, and then again, you see where we've got the big, uh, we had fifty-nine thousand dollars, um, budgeted last year that we're, we don't have this year at all because we theoretically finished that work. Although I will say that we just submitted our budget request to the friends and we asked them for help with some things. We'll be, we, we had, we have a wishlist. And it includes like the book drop and it, you know, includes some things. So we'll see what happens with that. Um, and that is all I have for library.
Um, communications. Um, so I'm excited to hear about the, uh, the planning for the next stage of, of the library. When we first started talking about it, it was so abstract, but now it's been so real. And I was gonna ask you, are the, are the meetings, uh, can people project, or not participate, observe by Zoom? A lot of people are being interested.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And we had a public person last week, certainly. Yeah. Yeah. So a couple of things, you know, I've been scrambling to keep up with this. The person who's supposed to be in charge of this has been on, on leave. Um, so it's been, um, my responsibility and I've had a huge amount of help from community services, um, staff helping as well. But, um, there is a, a webpage, just like you guys have a website, a page on the website that has you know, information, the links to the meetings, the minutes, the agendas, some background material, like, you know, the facility studies, whatever else is on before. Um, and then we also have, um, which I have not advertised, we have, you can sign up to receive email updates. So there's a form online that you can go and sign up and there's a link to that from that page, but I need to put that out and say, hey, people, this is, this is starting, um, sign up to learn more. We just haven't done it yet. But yes, you're welcome to come. It's a public, it's just like this. It's a public meeting that's subject to the Brown Act. So.
So that all sounds real exciting and interesting and the thought and planning that's gone into it. Yeah, it's, it's great to see. Um, Ben?
Um, I don't really have any updates, except that I know Annie and I, I think wanna connect with Kevin at some point to talk about just like getting a head start on planning for the volunteers. to talk about just like getting a head start on planning for the volunteer, um, appreciation event. And like whether we're merging with the friends or whatever, we had this conversation earlier.
Yeah, I started, I was like, oh my gosh, it's almost January.
No, I know that I, I got an email while I was on vacation. We were, and I was like, oh, and I've been thinking about it that.
Yeah, so we think that I've got.
We'll, we'll talk after, yeah.
Yeah. But you know, other updates?
Uh, yeah, um, well, in mid to late July, I attended a Zoom conference given by the United for Libraries, which is an arm of the American Library Association. Um, an outstanding conference, I will say. Um, several different, uh, there was a session, for instance, that I thought doesn't apply to South Pasadena at all. It was about onboarding trustees, and I think there are some wonderful ideas that could be used from that. Um, but the primary focus of the conference was ways in which a board of trustees can support the library. Whether it's, uh, fighting the culture wars or, um, you know, supporting library staff, advocating for libraries in the community. And I just thought it was a very wonderful conference with lots of good ideas. Um, and I don't want to take too much time about it, but, uh, I very much think that there are some things that we as a trustee board can do to support library.
So I think Ed and I were, were in, talked a little bit before the next meeting and think about how to bring that information back here and make it actionable in some way. So, yeah.
Um, I have something completely frivolous, but it pertains to libraries. With almost twenty-one million items, how many miles of bookshelves does Harvard have?
Oh, that's a good one.
And they give you four choices, which are eleven, twenty-eight, forty-two, or fifty-seven. It's fifty-seven miles of bookshelves at Harvard.
That's crazy.
I don't know if that means library or just.
All the libraries.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
That's fine.
And can I do one more?
Sure, of course.
This is a poem. It's William Butler Yeats, Where My Books Go. All the words that I utter and all the words that I write must spread out their wings untiring and never rest in their flight till they come where your sad, sad heart is and sing to you in the night. Beyond where the waters are moving, storm darkened or starry bright.
Oh, I like it.
And I saw there's a, a sort of a book display down there.
Yeah.
Hey, that goes with it. So.
Yeah.
All right, that's enough.
Um, uh, I know we'll get to the friends and everything, but I did the, um, you know, on Friday afternoons from quarter to six, they have a, a, a eleventh grader, I think, who's the tech help, Chauncey. So I went to him because I'm not real good with this. Wonderful.
Oh.
He is.
Love it.
He is a, he is a natural. I mean, he's, he's, he's a natural, uh, uh, if I need help, my nieces and nephews will grab my device, you know?
And then just give it back to you.
Chauncey, nope, he doesn't touch your device. He makes you do it and he, he, just wonderful. And then I saw that he's only going to be here till October and then they're not going to do it.
I don't know what his, I mean, he, I think he came to us and said, can I do this? And we said, okay. I mean, so it totally depends on his.
But I saw, saw that he's only going to be here through October.
Yeah, he probably has stuff to do.
I, I know.
He's probably getting ready to go to college and who knows what.
Yeah, but he's, I, I just, he's, he's just wonderful.
It's really nice. And he sits right there by the recense that we can kind of keep an eye on. Cause there are people who will sit there and sit there with him for like an hour and a half, you know, like.
Ooh, I, I said, he's also really, he's very mature.
Like, okay, well, that's, that's what I can do for you. Is there anything else I can do for you that's within my purview? You know, because some people just want to talk to him. Um, so yeah, he's, he's great.
And he, and he's wonderful. When he doesn't know how to do something, he'll admit it. He goes, no, he goes, he goes, I don't know how to do that. And then he just, and he looks it up, you know, and then he shows me, then he, then he shows me how to look it up. So he was, he was just.
Well, and this reminds me though, this was another place where this idea of seniors, the senior center, I mean, the senior center has teams that do tech help at the senior center. And we're over here doing ours, like in this new vision, you know, how do we, how do we harness and cooperate and, you know?
Well, yeah, and then, then, uh, at one point, his, uh, friends, his buddies kind of walked by and he, and he was fine. He was like appropriate with them and I was sitting there and they exchanged and, you know, he's a really, yeah, perfect. So I just want.
That's good to know. Yeah, I'm glad they.
And I told him, I told him all of these things. So I think he was a little embarrassed. But I'm going to see him again. So, um, and then, um, Olivia, the, the day that I was here, there was an incident and Olivia handled it perfect.
For what? What was, what kind of incident?
Um, I, well, I don't know, but she was outside handling it with the, uh, the customer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, uh, calmed the customer down and then the customer came back in. So, but it, but she was, she was wonderful.
They do a great job. It's just killing, it's just killing them, you know, it's exhausting.
Well, and it, and I, it, it took time and, and Olivia had to go outside.
And that's not what we.
And that was, and I just thought, Olivia's outside when.
I mean, she goes to be.
Doing her job.
Yeah, it's going to be.
But she didn't, yeah, they're really, really good.
They really are very, very good. And, um, but they cannot wait to have, uh, somebody else do that instead. You know, having a security guard to do that, yes, would be amazing. But, but, but thank you. I'll let her know. They already know that they are, that, that these guys are really great. But I'll let her know that.
Sure.
Um, yeah, I guess I'll start off. Um, we have our concert this Sunday in the community room. I want to give a big thanks to Kathy and Sean and everyone for helping us with all the paperwork and insurance stuff and, and really going above and beyond for, for us and making sure everything happened in a timely manner. Um, just many, many thanks, because I know that, that added hours of work onto your plate. So, thank you. Um, and then, uh, I guess the big news coming out of our, our last board meeting is we approved some funds from our tech endowment for some computer or some new tech replacement in the.
Yeah, um, you know, we have those, what they're, they're called awe workstations in the children's room that are specifically, they're not just computers, they're like, like game learning things. So are, they died and these guys came to the rescue and gave us seven thousand something dollars.
I know, but we were e- excited that you sent us over a really nice proposal and it was real quick consensus that it was appropriate for us to use that, that endowment money for that. So it felt real nice to to come in and save the day, but yeah. Um, so, uh, that's exciting. And then it was just really exciting hearing about this, all the tech happenings here, whether it's staff getting new computers, our community getting new computers, the RFID stuff coming to fruition. It just really is exciting stuff and it seems like it's going to save so much time and energy. And even with the security guard, just to give everyone else a little bit more time to maybe concentrate on the other things that they really love doing, you know, just as much as making sure this is a safe, fun, good environment. I'm really excited for all this stuff coming in at the end of this year, for next year to be a good one. Um, other, I don't think really anything else is, is really big happening with our friends.
Retreat, anything?
You know, uh, the most exciting thing was buying those, that, that good time for the, the kids, um, I'm not sure. And, and the other issues were just kind of figuring out the community room and our concert series, which I opened with, which figured out everything. Otherwise, with the retreat, we all got to kind of, we've done so much this year. And a lot of hard work and a lot of just change and movement. So it was really nice to sit down as a board and just kind of like relax for a second and look at one another and be able to say, oh, cool. Now we get to kind of really think about all the things outside of our organization and the structure and the operations. And really, then it was exciting to be like, oh, cool, we get to, you know, use our endowment funds, you know? And, um, so, you know, summer's always really interesting time. You know, for the friends, it slows down a little bit. Summer reading program picks up. I really like the, those numbers are exciting. So, um.
I will say that the Between Friends newsletter that comes once a month, it's fantastic.
Yeah, they're doing such a good job.
Yeah, we're always constantly being like, okay, what's the next, what's the other, how can we add? Please join the friends of the library. You can join at any amount. You can literally join for a penny and I believe it's a really lovely gesture. There's envelopes outside of this room in the front. You could go online, but that would be my plug for any amount, any.
What about your website? What's the story on that?
Oh, that's actually really exciting news. So we, uh, finally engaged a website designer after many committee meetings and kind of hearing what everyone's different needs would be, whether that's membership or, you know, our different kind of areas. Um, and so we kind of hired someone for phase one of a website, um, reboot, relaunch and kind of felt that also included them kind of training us and bringing a manual. So when we hand it off to the next person, it's kind of just like the constant updating of technologies. You know, it's like they're posting something that was done ten years ago and they've been wanting to change it, but no one's been able to champion it. And so, um, Roseanne's been doing a really great job at leading that. So.
Exciting.
That's, it is, it's gonna, it's really gonna, it's gonna, yeah, exactly. There's just lots of little changes and it's also, also exciting just figuring out how we're like, you know, it's like all of a sudden your website is like so much more than just words on a page. It's our databasing. It's how are we sending out our, you know, web blast, all of this stuff. So it, it gets kind of heady for something that you think is so simple. You know, you think, oh, I think we've been talking about this for, since I joined the board of like, we're actually going to do it. And now we've finally engaged a person for phase one, you know? And so, um, that came out of our meeting. Uh, but yeah. I know we've kind of locked in some dates, um, with our, our book sale and, um, co-sponsoring an event with, um, a South Pasadena Beautiful. Um, I wish I could rattle the date off on the top of my head, all about, or the bird, yeah.
Twenty-fourth is whenever.
Uh, yeah, this is twenty-fourth.
So I'll, I'll give a little plug on that. That's been a goal of our board is to try to engage other, like local nonprofits and kind of, you know, build, you know, our mission at the Friends is really building community awareness. And so that's been, now that we've done a bunch of business, now we get to do kind of the exciting things and how do we partner with other, you know, local causes that are aligned. So, um, that's it. We're, we're, we're very lucky for Karen Warren, she also sits on that board to kind of, um, foster a little bit of a relationship. So that's really, we're excited about that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I, I, I thought the retreat was lovely. What a beautiful setting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're really fortunate that they're very gracious, that we're leaning out to, uh, let you guys use that. And I just thought you did a great job, you know? And, uh, and, uh, Karen, uh, asked me to help out. She, we're thinking of doing, um, like a, a craft day for adults. So, and it would be with the friends, with the library, and it would be like a slow mendine, uh, not a repair cafe, but just more like a adult crafting idea. So she hooked me in. I'll be a part of that too.
Good to know. I can give a little update on that. Are you, are you done? No, I'm, I'm, that's, yeah, I'm done. Am I next?
Yes.
So a couple of, that makes me think of something. So the public services team has started to meet about the twenty twenty-five program schedule. So one of the things that had been brought to us was the idea of this crafting and partnership and what do you want to do? So the team have discussed that at length. So they're going to get back to you with like, here's what we can do, can't do. Is PJ involved?
Mm-hmm.
I guess so. So, um, yeah, so we, we'll see how that works out, whether it's a Friends thing independent or whether it's something the library is more involved in. Um, that's going to be up to them, but they'll get back to PJ and Karen, um, and let them know. Um, and that's exciting just to start looking at twenty twenty-five and what's going to happen in the fall. We have our, um, the silent film series with the piano accompaniment. Um, so that's going to be fun. I don't know that that flyer, I don't know if the information about that is out yet. I think it's not until October. Um, so I think we have three, maybe four, should be fun. So that's kind of fun. It's kind of a fun way to end the year. Um, and I wanted to mention that, um, Band Book Week is the twenty, starts the twenty-second of September. Um, so I think we're going to try to do, I was just thinking this morning, what should, what can we do? I think we'll do like, um, like a raffle kind of giveaway. There's lots of cute tote bags that are like re-banned books or, or whatever. And maybe people can write their favorite band book, put it in a drawing, um, and we'll do a book display. So we won't go crazy, but we'll do a little something. And, um, I think that's it. I don't think I have anything else that I need to go over with you guys right now. Yeah.
Um, so there's a public comment. Uh, with no further items or comments from staff or board members, I will now adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-four. Our next meeting is October tenth, twenty twenty-four at, uh, seven P M. Thank you all.